Settle down.
I'm ready to go.
Okay, everyone. This is going to be Tatchwe Council Special Meeting. Call to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Povenkorn?
Here.
Councilmember Wigan?
Here.
Councilmember Squirtman?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Davies?
Here.
And Mayor Smith?
Here.
Everyone is present, thank you.
We'll have the pledge to the flag. Greg, would you lead us tonight?
Sure.
In over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any audience oral and written commitments? Any audience communications whatsoever?
Yes. Good evening.
Hi. Hi, Elliot. You might cover this, but I just wanted to make sure because I am interested if in your presentation you could explain the reason for the subsidies for airport operations and landscaping lighting districts. Is that something you're going to cover already?
Yes, we will cover it.
All right, thanks, that's all.
Yep, thank you.
Anyone else?
All right, thanks, Claudia. City manager, finest director report. Here we go. Are you ready for this?
Oh, absolutely, thank you, Mayor Smith. Can you hear me okay? Is it all right? There we go. So here we go with our annual budget, let's say workshop, if you will. It's not set until you say so. We've set aside the next couple hours to go over in great detail all of the budgets, general fund, fresh water, wastewater, airports, LLDs, so on and so forth. So we put together a slideshow for you. It's about 65 slides, and we'll click through them, but I don't want anybody to feel rushed at all. Every budget season is challenging, but also has lots of opportunities. The city of Tatchwe is an amazing place. The city residents are amazing. The men and women that work for the city of Tatchwe are very dedicated to their job. We take great pride in presenting a balanced budget to you. We have a balanced budget for you this evening, but the next several years are going to be challenging at best. We have lots of issues that we'll be talking to you about. We'll be adopting, hopefully this evening, the budget for next fiscal year and the remaining four are preliminarily budgets. We continue to work on balancing every year's budget. But with COVID happening, with state unfunded mandates, those sorts of things, it gets a little harder and harder to balance a budget, just like all the other cities in the county of Kern. It's very challenging, but we continue to work together with all of our partners to do the good work. So with that, I would like to start. So what we have going on here, and I may get up from time to time, just to point to the screens, make sure that everybody is following along nicely. If you have any questions, please, Claudia, you brought up a question about LLDs and airports and such things. I want to make sure that everybody is very well satisfied and understands all of the elements of our budget.
Okay.
So we'll treat this as a workshop and then go through the presentation. So Hamed is going to run the computer for us, and then we'll just start now. Okay? I'm good. So expenses to keep in mind, again, like I said, we have, it's a very challenging time, not just for the city of Tatchwe, but for not just the state or the country, but the entire world. It's very challenging. We have, you know, potential recession looming, we have unfunded mandates that we talked about, lots of things that are happening. But we continue to challenge ourselves so that we can continue to provide the highest quality service that we've come to expect of ourselves and citizens are expecting from us. So let's start with the next slide. So I want to start with our current fire contract. I think this is significant because, as you know, we've been challenged by the county of Kern to pay a significant amount more than we have been paid in the past. Mayor Smith and Mayor Pro Tem Davies sat on a subcommittee, and we've been, we've had some meetings, we've gathered lots of data, and we continue to gather data as it relates to fire, fire protection. Currently, we have a five-year contract with the county of Kern for fire protection. We are prudent, exploring other options. Right now, they provide great fire service to us, but we can't control those costs. The only thing we know is that our costs over the next, if we project out six years, actually, our fire protection costs are going to increase 6,703% of what we've been paying. There are two components to fire funding. One is a property tax that the city residents pay that is allocated, and you can see the cursor there, 2223, that's $722,000 we receive in property tax revenue. We augment that with general fund, $196,000, 048, for 2223. But if we project out all the way to 2728, the total fire protection costs are about $2.2 million for the city of Tatchwe. So we continue to look at options.
So this is, could you explain the two items, 202% increase over six years and then the, so it's the increase on the general fund payment that's 6,700% higher?
Correct.
That's our portion we pay to augment what we don't have in the fire tax.
And so make no mistake, that's all city money, every bit of it. So the allocated property tax is city property tax revenue that comes from the state, and then we have the general fund payment. So if we look at the extra payment to the county of $18,000 in mid '21, '22, all the way up to 1.2, that's the 6,700.
Yes, right. Because when we had our own fire department augmenting Kern County, we had the volunteer fire department, then we went to our own fire for a period, and they, we negotiated a contract into contract where they'd get our equipment, they'd get, we would have a contract in place where they would take the pass-through fire fund taxes, and we were at a break-even point for several years there. Like you say, this year, we, out of general fund, we had to augment what taxpayers are paying for their fire tax by about $18,000. That's not unreasonable. I mean, that's pretty good. I mean, that's what we're paying that fire tax for. It should go for fire protection. But when you have to start adding every year, next year, all of a sudden, $196,000 more and then 385, that's half a million, 800, a million, a million-two, I guarantee we're not getting an increase in services for that extra payment. We're paying for something else, correct?
That is correct. So we cannot control the costs associated with Kern County Fire Department and their services that they provide, their personnel, their equipment. We're not at the table for those decisions. And same thing with the other nine cities. So there are 11 cities in the county of Kern. Big Shield City and California City provide their own fire services, right, they have their own fire departments. The other nine rely on the county of Kern. And we're not at the table as it relates to discussions, costs, equipment, personnel, calls for service, times to, you know, from dispatch to onsite, those sorts of things. And so we've established a better relationship with Kern County and Kern County Fire as it relates to fire. So again, it's not that the firefighters are providing, you know, a self-part service. They provide good service. It's all about the dollars, and every dollar matters. And so we want to make sure always that we're prudent in looking forward to planning. That's what we are. We're planners. We've talked about that a lot.
But this is going to severely impact how we use our general fund because it's going to eat up the general fund over time where we're not going to have any reserves left.
And you're going to, you'll see that in a couple of slides. And the same thing is happening, this is happening with all of the cities within Kern. Ridge, Crest, Wasco, Chapter, Taft, they're all experiencing this same problem. We're all working together to try to rectify this and create a solution, whether it's a city solution or a regional solution.
Because we realistically can't do that.
Great. Okay, next slide. So we'll talk about subsidies for a minute. Claudia, you brought this up, thank you for that. So the general fund subsidizes certain funds within the city, right? And if we look at this chart, current projected subsidies for '22, '23 for airport operations, this is personnel, overhead, electricity, those sorts of things, the projected is 170,381. That's for operations. The next line down is 346,500. That's the matching component for an FAA grant. As you know, a couple of years ago, we started a journey with the FAA to improve our airport. So taxiway and runway relocations, actually taxi relocation, not runway, and the drainage improvements. So the FAA has agreed to grant several million dollars, but there's a grant, a matching component to that grant. It's not free money. So in '22, '23, our matching component is 346,500. And that goes to zero next year because part of that grant, it's a multi-year grant project, and we will receive no FAA money for that. It's worth noting that Ashley has an amazing relationship with the FAA, and there could be more funds available to the city of Tatchwe so that potentially we can shrink that 10% down. If things get very tight, of course, we always look at grants and the matching component and pushing things out. But currently, the way it is on the books, we'll subsidize the airport, the combination of 170 and 346,000. In addition to that, landscaping and lighting districts, these are the LLDs that we talk about quite often, the turf, the grass, the trees, the bushes, the streetlights, those sorts of things. There's some landscape lighting districts that we do not collect enough property tax to pay for those areas. For instance, Warrior Park, right? That's a gem, it's a jewel in that community, and actually, everyone in the city and even beyond uses it, but it does cost us more to maintain that than we receive in property tax revenue for that specific area. So you can see the graph below, you know, things are, they spike up because of the matching component with the airport, right? And that's projected out. Does that make sense?
It does, but it wasn't quite as much as I was hoping for. On the airport, I'm wondering why the users of the airport, through their various, whatever they pay you, are not covering the expense.
So, great question, and that's a question that comes up regularly. We do have leases with individuals and corporations, and so those leases, once they're locked in, you can't, you can't cancel it. And so we charge for ground lease sometimes, hangar lease, fuel sales, those sorts of things. This is very typical for general aviation airports. Hardly ever do they run in the black. Almost always, they run in the red. It's something that we don't, we don't like, and we continue to work with the FAA. And new leases, as we create new leases, we're increasing the lease value, but it's a balance, that's for sure. And the airport is an asset that is a public safety asset also. So there is a subsidy there, but we try to shrink that subsidy. And you can see between '20, '21, it was 170, and then mid-year was 102,689. So it did go down nearly $70,000 over one year, and that's due to Ashley and her hard work. But that varies from time to time. The big jump is, of course, grant subsidies, so grant matches.
So on the landscape lighting, a couple of meetings ago, you had that report and you passed, I guess, the assessment?
Yes.
So that doesn't cover everything?
No. Well, they're each, let's, existing neighborhoods don't have a landscape lighting district. So new neighborhoods, the landscape lighting district is formed. There's an engineering report that goes with that. So the engineer looks at, the consultant looks at, you know, the square feet of turf, number of bushes, trees, those sorts of things, number of the streetlights, and they create an estimate for what it would take to tack on to the property tax with that neighborhood. That's put into the property tax bill for that home. After a couple of years, sometimes it's right where you want to be, sometimes you're collecting a little more, which you can only collect a very, very little more, actually, you want it to be a net-net every year. Sometimes you're collecting a little less than what it actually takes to maintain that area. The only way we could rectify that would be to go out to a vote to those neighborhoods. I believe, and city council has agreed in the past too, we've talked about this, it's really not terribly fair to go back to the homeowner and say, you know, the developer blew it, you need to pay more. Now, we can, that's always something to do. It would be a vote, but we'd have to send a ballot to every home. They would have to vote whether or not they want to increase their property taxes. So there's a balance there somewhere.
Greg, I have a question. Would it be fair to characterize this as, you know, are this is our best effort to have the costs paid for appropriately where those services are being provided? But as unbalanced, our community takes pride in, you know, the aesthetics of our landscaping in our community that we all to some degree experience? And so it's, is it pretty normal for cities to not have a perfectly balanced, you know, district, you know, taxpayers supporting each neighborhood and the cities, the overarching resource to make sure that we have a city that is as beautiful as we feel we can afford to sustain?
That's correct. A lot of cities don't have landscape lighting districts, and so 100% of the general fund pays for the streetlights, the landscaping, those sorts of things.
I guess what I'm trying to say is the alternative is that we don't maintain
Right.
a certain level of landscaping and lighting that is both aesthetically pleasing and in terms of lighting safe. Is that the alternative?
Yes.
So I'm off, we're almost there.
You're fine.
So do we have places in town, older areas, that probably don't have any landscaping but might have lighting?
Yes.
And are not part of the district?
Yes. So this is a relative, landscape lighting districts are relatively new, you know, within 10 years, 15 years of joint business. So all of the older neighborhoods, the well-established neighborhoods, their lighting is paid for through the general fund.
Separate from this district?
Correct.
Okay, that's all I, that's what I was trying to get.
So certainly, like Clearview, Heritage Oaks, Alta Estates, those neighborhoods, the newer neighborhoods, they're self-taxing themselves for this service.
But coming up short.
But some of them, not all of them.
Okay.
Yeah, Jane, did you have something you want to add to that maybe?
Maybe an important clarification since you guys charged me with
Yeah.
reading all those reports. Some LLDs are by design not in balance because the law, the fundamental law requires that there be, the service be connected to the tax. So in the, we have a couple of LLDs that are upside down because they have a regional park. And so you can't put the entire cost of maintenance of that park that serves a large population on just the residents that
Warrior Park being
Warrior Park is the primary, is probably the single most expensive example of that. So whereas other neighborhoods that might be served by Warrior Park, like Orchard Glen, I think is the one right across the street, they pay in to pay for Warrior Park. So we do our best to recover as much as we can, but they are inherently very difficult to get to balance. If you have any regional facilities, you won't get to balance. So you'll get close, which we try to do.
Thank you.
So basically, all of this from the general fund pays for the lights and stuff around town. The older neighborhoods, we don't have to pay an extra tax. The newer neighborhoods, when they have a development, they have to create the district for landscaping and lighting, so they're actually, they have a separate tax in addition to what their property tax supports, the lights and stuff are all over town. We could take it all away, we'd all be sharing it, but we've always felt that if there's new development, why should the existing homeowner foot the bill for new landscaping and lighting and big developments? So we're getting something. It's going to be not 100% cover that district's expenses, but it's something that goes toward it that the existing taxpayer would have had to pay more if we were all having, if they didn't have the districts. Our general fund
We probably wouldn't have the landscaping in some places.
That's true, that's correct. And, you know, at the end of the day, streetlights make things safer. Landscaping is pride in our city, in our community. So I think it's very important to the well-rounded health of the city.
Okay.
Okay, well, did you have something you wanted to add?
I was just going to point out that those assessments, they're capped each year on how much they can increase. And so at the time that they were formed, you have some cities that had a cap of maybe 2%, and you'll see in other cities sometimes they quickly go under. In our case, a lot of them have CPIs, you know, that they're tied to an annual increase, so they can have inflators above 2% to help keep up with the costs, so.
Okay, that helps, thank you.
Okay, moving on?
Yes.
We're good? So we'll go to slide five. This is just a slide, obviously, in the beginning here, I'm talking about challenges and opportunities. And this is a slide in regards to insurance premiums. I'm not talking about employee healthcare. Remember, a couple of years ago, we actually came to the city council and suggested, and you agreed, that we capped employee healthcare costs. So the city of Tatchwe is capped. We only pay a certain amount of money. As healthcare for employees and their families increase, the employee is responsible for that delta. We're talking here about insurance premiums for liability, property, vehicle, those sorts of things. As you would imagine, it's just trending up. It's not coming down, it's just trending up. Okay? You see that we had, you know, just a year ago, year and a half ago, 1.75, we're now looking at 2.5, and, you know, we're projecting out, you know, I'm sorry, 2.2, and then we're projecting out to 2.6 over the next couple of years. So we just expect that to continue to rise. Okay, next slide. Other major factors within this budget year, '22, '23. So public safety, chief is here, the men and women of the Tatchwe Police Department did an amazing job, but the challenge is so great with the state mandated, you know, where they're changing, they're releasing criminals out of prison, we have this revolving door of, you know, kind of that cat and mouse. We've reduced felonies down to misdemeanors, but we still have the same amount of criminals, maybe more, on the streets in the entire state, and we have to manage that. And so in this budget, we're actually looking to increase our public safety budget. And lots of unfunded mandates from the state, just a little smattering here, we've got the organics, the SB 1383, we've talked about time and time again, over the last several months with Mr. Costello. Public Works, they're required to retire perfectly good equipment, tractors and things because of air quality standards. PD Communications, encryption mandated by the state with no funding. And then, of course, the unfunded pandemic costs, you know, COVID, sick time, those sorts of things that the city has to backfill, have to backfund, backfund these things. So lots of challenges.
Public safety is our top priority, and we will always figure out a way to make sure that, because when neighborhoods decline because we can't cover, I mean, if you have less service, neighborhoods will decline.
That's right. Chief, did you want to speak to that for a minute? I mean, we've talked about it so many times, but once you lose a neighborhood, a one-house goes, a street goes, it's impossible to get it back. And so we are committed to making certain that doesn't happen in the city of Tatchwe. We cannot allow what has happened in other cities to take place in the city of Tatchwe, and we're not. We're committed to getting to making certain that our city is, remains one of the safest cities in Kern and beyond.
Yeah, absolutely. We've done great so far. We've been able to maintain here, we've had crime reductions, but we're certainly feeling the pinch. We're certainly feeling the repeat offenders are here in our community. We're getting a frantic type of crime, the people coming from outside of the community to commit crime here in our community, and it's really important that we maintain our staffing, increase our staffing as a matter of fact, so that we can address these criminal justice problems. I see no change in the state in the way that they're going to treat crime and address criminals, so we've got to, we've got to do everything we can here on our end to make sure that we have a safe community.
Okay. Another unfunded mandate that's not on the list there, but you'll recall, the state of California mandated that water agencies, we could not shut off water for non-payment. Not that we want to shut somebody's water off, but during the pandemic, lots of households and businesses stopped paying their water bills. And that means they didn't pay their sewer bills either, or their trash bills. We continue to have to pump water, store water, deliver water, treat sewage, and pay waste management. That's where the general fund came in, right? We were temporarily subsidizing that. So that was an unfunded mandate that we had to bankroll ourselves to make certain that those enterprise funds were remaining healthy.
So we're lucky we had the reserves to do it.
And remember, Mayor Smith, several years ago, we were committed to raising our reserves. And we have been successfully, every year, putting money in the bank for a rainy day. And it's, you know, it's, we don't want to use those reserves, but certainly they're there. Okay, next slide, please. So other major factors, we need to continue to invest in not only people, but equipment and different items. So PD equipment, vehicles, $175,000 that we budgeted for this year. Public Works equipment and deferred maintenance, $391,000. We must continue to maintain facilities. We can't let roofs leak, we can't let things go astray. IT security upgrades, AKA Russian hackers, right? Ashley is our IT manager, she's working closely with the county of Kern and receiving some grants and different things, but we must remain secure within our IT department, which includes all of the business, city halls, city hall annexes, but also the police department, the department of justice, so on and so forth. We talked about the taxiway relocation, $346,000, that's our match. And the Pennion Road extension grant, that's money that we're receiving from the state of California, $719,000. But, you know, we have to bankroll these things as we build it, and we have to pay for it and then reimburse later. So those are some of the factors that we're looking at, some of the big ticket items that, pretty quickly. Next slide. So we'll look at a citywide revenue budget. So these are the revenues, the money coming in. It's 30, just over $34 million this year, and it varies, of course, because of grant funds coming in. And so these are revenues, general fund, airport, water, sewer, so on and so forth. And you can see the amount of money and the percentage. So the amount adds up to 34 million, the percent adds up to 100% of our budget. So you can see there, maybe a little bit of time to look at that. Any questions?
So typically, the airport would be closer down
Two.
7.9%
You got it. It jumped up to 7.9, 7.5 because of the grant.
Right.
Right?
Well, the airport's at 22, 3% revenues right now because of the grant.
Correct.
Typical year without anything else would be in the, probably around 7 or 8% of the budget.
What's a typical 1.2, Ashley, for the airport?
For the actual budget or the percentage?
The actual budget. Well, it varies, it's hard to say, it changes every
Because it's as a percent of the budget, you could have another account that's got a grant in it, and it's, so the percentage is not that important.
We hate to, you know, we have We hate to, you know, we have FAA, we have Caltrans Aeronautics and other sources, but the airport operations are about $170,000.
Right. And those are fairly stable.
That's to keep things running.
Okay.
Okay, next slide. This is the same information, but a pie chart. I'd like to show it in a couple of different formats. This one's easy to read, if you will. You can see the general fund, 12 million. Airport, 7.5, again, because of the grant. Water operations, 4.8. Sewer, 2.6, so on and so forth.
So from the earlier question regarding landscape lighting districts, the total right now is at 780?
Correct.
And being subsidized by about 354?
Correct.
Okay. So about half of it is a subsidy, but the older neighborhoods aren't having to pay that?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Next slide. This is our expenditure. So this is the money going out, $33 million, which is a little less than $34 million, right? And so, you know, at the end of the day, we'd like our budgets to be net-net, quite frankly. You know, we want to put some money in the bank for a rainy day, but certainly, you know, especially when it comes to the enterprise funds, the water, sewer, those, and refuse, transit, we want it to be a net-net at the end of the year. And so this talks about the money, how much money is being spent, projected to be spent, and the percentage.
Well, on the enterprise funds, especially like sewer and water, you can't charge more than a certain percentage more for future growth of the sewer plant or the water facility. It has to have the nexus by an engineering report that says, this is what we charge the customer, the rate for the service. And you can't, you can't have a huge reserve that doesn't match what we're charging for the service.
Operations and new improvements are two different budgets. So operations are one thing, you know, pumping the water, delivering the water, keeping a safe water system as opposed to upgrading because of new development. And that comes from the new resident or the developer.
With their connection fees.
With their connection fees. Two separate budgets that are budgeted and accounted for separately. Okay? Next slide. We'll look at the same thing, expenditure, with a nice pie chart. Gives you, you know, a visual as to where the $33 million ends up. All right, next slide. This is citywide. So this is a pie chart that shows capital ally, 12, 11 million. Personnel, 10, which you would expect typically in any corporation, personnel is the largest cost. And operating expenses, 11 and a half million. So this is just a pie chart that groups a lot of those previous charts together to show you the citywide budget. So this is the general fund revenue. So general fund is, I don't want to call it the slush fund, but certainly it's mostly unmitigated. So you have the ability, you know, the water fund, it's strictly water, sewer strictly sewer. General fund, you have the ability to utilize these funds and spend them in various ways.
So they're not encumbered?
Unencumbered is a better word. So this, we're projecting $12.2 million. And this is where the money is coming from, right? We have a lodging tax, top left, $998,000. We're just shy of $1 million.
It's been growing very well.
It has been growing. We're in the neighborhood of 350, maybe 400 hotel rooms. We have another hotel that's-
Does that include the new hotel?
It would. It's projected to include the new hotel. So they are projected to be open in the next month. So I know that's been an ongoing conversation, but COVID has really hit them hard with their equipment. But they're still very close to opening. And I think that's 82 rooms. And there's an 8% tax on the hotel tax, the bed tax. And so $1 million, that's a lot of money. That's a nice number that we're receiving from whether they're contractors or people traveling through, those sorts of things. But we do spend that money on streets and roads and public safety and those sorts of things, right? You have to have the revenues to be able to provide those services.
And if I remember correctly, the policy we adopted to accommodate Airbnbs and VRBOs also includes the 8%?
It does. There are a couple Airbnb's in town now. 8% is a very low number. Typically, if you go to Anaheim, Disneyland, I think it's-
15%.
15, plus other visitor taxes and all kinds of fun things.
They have like a tourism district tax or, yeah.
Passerobles, same thing. They have a county tax, they have a state tax, they have a, not state, I'm sorry, county, city, tourism, several taxes. You know, your $200-
Here's the base rate of the room.
Pretty quick. So we're very conservative and collecting and spending, you know, the taxpayer dollars. So if we continue to move around, property taxes, 1.4. Federal grant, COVID relief, so that was a 1.5, 5.6 money that the federal government sent the city of Tatchi based upon population for backfilling revenue losses, right? It wasn't intended to build anything or, you know, build a street or build a building. It was intended to backfill our losses. So the federal government did us a huge favor, actually. The state doesn't normally do that, but the federal government did. We expect to receive another 1.5 next couple of weeks in July. In July. So that money will backfill what was lost in revenue. So we'll show that in a minute.
Okay.
Does the federal grant COVID relief include the $800,000 from last year's budget that you said you were going to move forward in the mid-year?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
We originally, we didn't know how it was going to be reviewed, so we had split up $800,000 into several years. So that was originally in the '21, '22 budget. At mid-year, we zeroed that out because now we know that we're expecting a 1.5 next fiscal year.
And it was a moving target also. In addition, there were no, let's say strings attached. Usually you'll get a grant from the federal, state, or whoever with lots of rules. In this case, the rules never came out, and there was never intent to provide any guidance or rules. And so we were not hesitant, but we were very cautious as to how we were, when we received the money and what we spent it on, those sorts of things. But it's simply to backfill revenue losses. Sales tax, $4 million. Sales tax is really the revenue driver for cities like Tatchi. Right now, we're seven and a quarter. There are other cities, Lancaster-Pongo, eight and a half, I believe, Bakersfield raised theirs to eight and a half, I'm sorry, Lancaster-Pongo, 10, 10 and a half. Bakersfield, I think, eight and a half in that neighborhood. We're still at seven and a quarter. But that's the biggest revenue source. Excuse me.
We're 7.25, right?
7.25. Yeah, so that's where our $12.2 million comes from for the general fund. Okay, next slide. These are our top 10 revenue sources. Sales tax, number one. Property tax, VLF, vehicle license fee, that is when you pay the tags for your vehicle. We receive $1.6 million from the state. The federal grant, COVID relief is there, 1.5. That won't be there forever, of course. It's a one-time shot in the arm, TOT and so on and so forth.
So looking at this, it's pretty clear how much the sales tax does, as you said, drive our total budget and services that the community is counting on us to supply. You mentioned that we are the lowest by more than a percentage. You know, do we need to appreciate the reality that we are perhaps in a time where we can no longer deliver the services that are expected, especially in light of what we're looking at, fire services and unfunded mandates, that that's something we're going to have to consider in order to plan responsibly?
The answer's yes. The city of Tatchi does not, you know, design and build widgets and sell them. We provide a service. And first and foremost is public safety. Streets and roads, so on and so forth, planning elements, all those sorts of things. But at the current, let's say, burn rate and/or, you know, revenues coming in, expenses are going through the roof. To no fault of our own, these are expenses that are being pushed upon us, that we're going to have to make some decisions as to what to do. Either we, you know, we stop watering the grass and keeping the streetlights on, or we start to eliminate some public safety services. I don't want to do any of that. We're going to have to figure out really, and that's what we do every day. We have a team at the city. So we've been looking at options, of course, to study that. We've hired Lou Edwards, as you know, a consultant. They've been doing some research for us. What does the public want? What's the most important thing to them? Rank the top five. And we've found that the public, they agree with the direction that the city's going, generally, actually, 74%, I believe, which is an incredibly high number. And they think that public safety, as we do, is a super high priority. And so we have to continue to find ways to fund those parts of our budget.
I think as we're looking at this, I just think it's important that we don't get caught flat-footed, that we do plan accordingly. I think, as Phil stated on behalf of the council, and I appreciate his position that public safety is the most important thing, and we're looking at a national, you know, issue in terms of hiring, retaining, and supporting our public safety to provide the services we count on. So I just, I think it's important we look at the fact that we do, as you say, we are a conservative community, we live in a conservative county, but the fact that we are a percentage lower than everywhere else, I'm not sure that that is sustainable. And I'm glad to know that we're considering options.
Well, the difference between 7 and 1/4 and 10 and 1/2 in Lancaster-Pongo, that's large. And that's a lot of money. I think that that area, Lancaster-Von, may be bringing in $20 million plus dollars. And that money today too, sales tax money is not just when you buy something at Walmart, let's say. When you order something through the mail, whether it's Home Depot or Amazon or anywhere in between, there's an allocation that's put out through the state and the county. But if there were any increase in sales tax at the city of Tatchi, if it were half a percent or a percent, that, every bit of it would come into our coffers. No strings attached, no state of California telling us what we can and can't do with it. That money comes straight into our coffers and we keep it. And we allocate it out to our specific local needs. So we're researching that, and we hope to bring something to you. Our consultant, we've talked about this a couple times, we hired Lou Edwards several months ago. They've been, again, doing some phone surveys and some internet surveys, emails and different things. And they've been coming up with some really interesting information, and we'll be bringing that back to you here very soon.
So if I do my math right, we have about $4 million that we are receiving in sales tax. If I divide that by .0725, that's about, our gross is about $55 million what we collect in this area. Is that how you? 7.25 of X is some number that we give $4 million of. What part of the 7.25 do we get?
Well, that's a very complicated. It's an easy question with a complicated answer.
It's called California math.
It is. There's things called triple flip and this and that, and I'll defer to my expert here. It's always, but it's 1% of.
It's 1% of-
1%.
Of the growth or?
1%.
Pardon me?
Makes sense.
It's 1% of 1%.
It's 1% of 1%. But it's, that is .01 then. Yes.
1% of 1%. Right? It's .01.
It's very, very complicated. It's Starbucks, for instance. If you're going to drink to go or to stay, it's different, right? There's so many elements. And this is a large conversation at the state level. There's a big debate, there's lots of arguments happening because where product is stored, warehouse, where it's shipped to, where it's shipped from. You know, just to give you some backstory as to how much, but it's 1% of 1%.
Of the growth that we collect here?
Yes.
So, yeah. All right.
We've all been, some of us are older, and we've lived through the early marriage and poverty and how am I going to buy milk today and whatever? And we've learned through that that you have to be frugal and you have to save. But there comes a point where you, there's nothing left to save. You know, if you've got, let's say, $100 is your reserve for my budget, when that's gone, it's gone. And then what do we do? And we have to be responsible for taking care of the city. And I think we have to do whatever we have to do, short of, you know, flying to Monaco or something. But we have to, we have to really work to make sure that we protect our reserves and that we continue to have enough money to operate.
Local control is key. We cannot rely on DC or Sacramento. We never have, quite frankly. And as you can see, over the last, you know, 12 to 24 months, they have pushed down so many unfunded mandates. It's really caused harm to our city and many, many others, all others, quite frankly. So we have to be self-sufficient in our journey.
One of our cities in East Kern County had a mayor in the early days, and they were relying on taxes and they were relying on the California City Development Company, all these different things. And this one mayor always said, last one out, turn out the lights, because he wasn't sure they were going to come back on tomorrow. And I don't ever, ever want to be in that position.
Yeah, no, we're not talking about that here.
No, we're not. But we want to, we want to make sure that we never are.
Right. Meanwhile, back at the rank. What are our gross sales in our, that we calculate our budget from? Is it around $55 million?
Or you're talking for sales?
Citywide, how much is the gross sales that we're receiving 7.25% of?
I don't have the number. We have reports with that number that we get quarterly, but I don't have them.
It's not straightforward because of the way it's collected and distributed. It's so, if, I would love to be able to explain it to you, but we will have to, I'm thinking back- Take your time. But if I take 7.25% of 55 million-
It's not just that.
I get $4 million. Okay.
But it's like you said, it depends on the orientation of the purchase is how the sales tax is assigned. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So like you said, if you order something from Amazon, because you live in Tatchi, your tax is-
7.25.
Is that correct? So it's not just purchases made, you know, in a brick and mortar store here?
That's right.
So our gross sales would include grocery store, which is, a lot of items are not taxed.
Well, groceries are not.
So I can see-
Yeah, they're not taxed.
Okay.
This is an important issue, but I know that based on the number of pages, we're, from page 16 of a 65-page report, somewhere around 14.
All right, carry on.
Okay, everybody, next slide, if we have no further. So this is just a slide, miscellaneous other revenues. Interest income, we've diversified our portfolio, still within the financial policies, and so we expect to receive about $100,000. Miscellaneous revenue, these are different things, collected in city hall, maybe date payments, things like that, passport processing, $24,000. And that's a service that we provide to the public. This is a comparison between '21, '22 and '22, '23 of variance. So you can see they all, sales tax, we projected to go up, $215,000. Property tax, VLF, so on and so forth. Development services revenue, down $51,000. That's because when somebody comes in the door to CJ to pull a permit for a new home, a new retail, so on and so forth, and that's, those are the economic waves that we ride. That money is reimbursed anyway, it's an in and an out, so it's actually not lost revenue per se. Police grants, that's mostly timing. We're told through the county and the state that, you know, we receive typically $100,000. The 52, 336 is still pending, and so because we don't have an absolute, because we budget very conservatively, we're leaving it out. If we receive it, it's a bonus. That's where we come back to- That's where we come back to the being self-sufficient locally. Right there is a perfect example of being reliant on the state or others for those ones. Next slide. These, this is a nice chart that shows a 10-year kind of trend from 1718 out to 2627. The bluest sales tax, you can see it dipped in 1920, of course, that was COVID, but different things. So they're trending, they're all trending up generally, but they've been known to dip, of course, because of pandemics and different things, recessions that we had not so long ago, and other things. Okay, on Mr. Revenue. So sales tax revenue, again, a little over $4 million, a 5.7% increase.
Of which we have no idea.
Well, we do. And I'm going to, we're going to, I'm going to bring a report to you, Phil.
That'd really be cool.
We absolutely know, but it's very complicated. It's extremely complicated.
But I'd like to kind of know what the gross sales are here in whatever manner.
Sure.
It's always a kaleidoscope of.
We'll bring it to you, and there will be a test.
Well, fine, I like tests.
You can see the dip in sales tax, of course, that was COVID again. And that's where the federal relief money came in to help backfill that. Okay. We're projecting, and go back real quick, we're just projecting a 1.9% growth. We budget very, very conservatively. Next slide. So this is property tax revenue, $2.1 million, 2.7% increase. The dip that you see there in the mid-21, '22 was due to the RDA. Again, here we go. The state of California seized all the RDAs, redevelopment agencies of the state, and they're actually collecting those revenues. The delta between?
The delta that?
They're keeping that. We still pay off, you know, our bills that we have, because we floated bonds to go and make some improvements, so we're paying those first. The agency still exists, but any additional delta, they, that's received, they receive that revenue. So again, that was timing, there's some timing in property tax revenue receipts. Next slide. TOT, trends of occupancy tax, again, just shy of a million dollars. We're projecting, and this is, this is using the actual number of hotel rooms and nights of, you know, heads in beds, if you will, and how we can project that growth over the next seven years. Okay, next slide. VLF, vehicle license fee, again, this is the tags for your vehicle. Even though there's a pandemic and there's a vehicle shortage, people buying cars, they continue to buy cars, whether they're new or used. You can see this continues to trend up. Expected to actually see a dip in that, but we're not seeing a dip at all.
Well, the average life of a car is about 12 years.
Yeah. My car at home is 12 years. People are keeping them longer, but you still pay a lot of money for the tax. New cars are astronomical. And we do get a small piece of that, of that pie from the state of California. Okay, next slide. These are the expenditures that we're looking at for general funds. So of course, capital purchases, non-PD personnel, police personnel, and operating expenses. This is a nice graph, I'm sorry, a pie chart, that'll give you a snapshot as to where the general fund revenue is being spent.
Where are the subsidies, in what part of this pie chart, that we're subsidizing?
I think operating, the 4.3.
So airport, fire, you know, those kind of things are coming out of. This is the whole enchilada, which is a slice of the other one.
And so the next slide, does the next slide show? There we go. So let's look at this a little bit, I think it'll help you, Phil. Police, a total is 5.2. So flip back, please. Police personnel, 4.1, but if we flip forward, the total is 5.2. And then fire early is 9.27. And if we flip to the next pie chart, fire grows to 1.9 or 14. So we're seeing increased costs in the overhead for public safety.
The 9.27 includes the fire tax that we pass through as part of?
Correct.
Right? And then whatever we're subsidizing in addition.
And so this is for '22, '23 only.
Yeah. So as for this year, the subsidy from the general fund was 18,000. Last year, 18,000. Contract cost was 726, and we collected 707 of property tax. So that one was fairly close, but, okay.
So I think the issue, nice pie chart, is to where the, where the money's being spent. Okay, public works, 1.1, streets and roads, those sorts of things, street lights that are not in LLDs, asphalt patching, those sorts of things. Next slide. This is a general fund summary, so we can go back. At the top left, you can see the actuals from 2021, right? And then it runs across the top all the way to 2627. The highlighted yellow? Highlighted yellow?
Got to go. We were hoping to talk to you, but take off.
Highlighted yellow is the budget here that we're talking about now, right?
Yes.
'22, '23. And you can see where we have property taxes, fire fund, CFDs, sales tax, those sorts of things, the revenue. So that's 12.2 million. Expenditures, talk about, sorry. Wrong way, there we go, okay. Expenditures, personnel, operating fire service, those sorts of things, 12, a little over 12 million. And then we're projecting a surplus this year of 189,000. That's a good thing, right? We're just about net-net. But as you see, if you scroll to the right, where the cursor is, at the current burn rate, next year we'll spend 836,000 more than we bring in, more than we bring in.
Yes, because we're subsidizing more.
Correct. Costs are going up. Fire costs are going up, you know, insurances are going up, unfunded mandates, those sorts of things that we detailed and talked about earlier, right? Discuss those. But you'll see underneath, we have fund balances, right? 13 million, right? Actual cash, 13 million in the bank. But we don't want to take that 13 million down to zero, we continue that, so we need to find out the opportunities to provide the same level of service.
Yeah, because we're going to burn that fast over the next few years. We're going to be depleting our reserves.
Well, next year, 836, the following year, 1.3, those sorts of numbers. And so the beauty about a five-year budget is, we can barely certain predict next year, next fiscal year. The next four, they're the best educated guess, with everybody putting their hands together, right? But we want, it's really healthy to show these trends and understand, so that we can continue to work together to figure out how we can continue to keep our city safe and healthy.
What are the other taxes and revenues? Because actual, right now it's 4.3, mid-year is 1.6, and '22, in the yellow column, it's 3, and then the next year it's 1.3. What are those?
So the 4.3 that you see in 2021? Yeah. Was the first half of ARPA money, so there's 1.5 billion there. And then also in that 3 million in '22, '23, there's another 1.5 billion in ARPA money.
Okay. That makes sense, because in the following years, when we don't get that, they're at about 1.3, 1.33, 1.3. Okay.
Right, and that was because the federal government had to print that money, right? It took time to print all that money. But honestly, you can't just continue to put cash into the economy. That, that money is, in my opinion, it's causing us some short-term relief, the long-term problems. And so we have to be very, very aware, you know, the top financial institutions in the country and the world are predicting, you know, some sort of a recession, whether it's short-lived or long-lived. And we need to make sure that we really buckle down, like we always have been, but certainly be keenly aware of what's going on around us, because so many forces are working, I'll say, against us.
Or with our fund balances, as they are, we're in fair shape to battle the storm, but we can't be depending on that year after year. We got to be self-sufficient.
Right. Self-sufficient is the key to survival in today's, today's world. At work and at home. Okay, next slide. This is, this is a slide we just wanted to show you without the ARPA money.
Yeah, it just shows what I was asking.
Yeah, right, exactly. Okay, next slide. So the one-time revenue, 1.5 in fiscal year '22, '23. Again, as I repeated, said earlier, I'll repeat, one-time expenditures, increasing reserves, paying down unfunded liabilities, not to be used for, you know, building things or, you know, buying things. It's to backfill what you're doing already, okay? And then I'll repeat the one-time spending that we have projected for '22, '23. The deferred building maintenance, 391, the FAA grant, 346, IT, 335, PD vehicles, 175.
So we're making good use of a grant from the federal government to use for, like, the server upgrade, police department. And then that FAA grant that you were talking about, you know, it's actually, we're using the government, federal money to, to the match, which keeps our, our general fund balanced up.
Okay, next slide. The challenges this year, of course, we've talked about the massive fire contract increases, increased public safety priority. We have in this budget, in addition of assistant police chief, sergeant, and two officers. I think that is imperative to continue to keep our city and region safe. Assistant police chief is succession planning also. Sergeant, we, we have three now, we believe, we need four for full coverage, and two officers. Men and women on the street is super important to make sure that, you know, we keep our community safe. Insurance premiums, we've talked about that, we're looking at 10% increase just this year alone. Again, not healthcare for employees. This is all of the other insurances that we cover, that we carry, that we're required to carry. You know, people keep talking about recession. Whether it happens or not, we want to make sure that we are prepared for it. We're looking at it, we're budgeting for it, we're discussing it, and we're not caught off-guard. And we're looking at a deficit if we continue, which we don't want.
And that's primarily due to the fire contract?
Oh, that's a big part of it, absolutely.
I thought it came back in, I was going to offer the floor to?
Corey, Kentucky.
Yeah. To the fire department person?
The fire is a journey, though, that we're taking. And, you know, every city takes journeys with public safety, all of the different elements to departments. We're gathering a lot of information from Kern County Fire, other neighboring cities, cities up and down the state, regional and beyond, and potential partnerships and different things. We're not taking the fire increases lightly, we want to make sure that we hit it head-on. We provide that same service that everybody has expected, expects to receive, but with a manageable number, dollar value.
Well, years ago, when we went from our own police department to the sheriff's contract, we were saving money, and it was, and we were starting to break even, but over time, lo and behold, it was costing us more as a percentage of our general fund than it used to. And I think we're doing very well now, I'm glad we came back.
There's a difference, you know, business model difference between police and sheriff, that's for sure. But thank God we have our own police department. I tell you what, you know, Kern County Sheriff, Don Youngblood will, Sheriff of Youngblood will say this, you know, they're struggling with filling their roster with employees, increased costs, those sorts of things. So we could be paying for service, quite frankly, and some cities in Kern are, they're not quite getting the service that they expect.
And like you said earlier, the officers and the firemen, they're all doing a good job, but they're being allocated very, you know, they're thin.
Well, and the sheriff recently reported that they have money allocated. They have, let's see, academies, too, that are actively happening, but they still don't have the vacancies filled.
That's right.
Part of this is, again, a national issue that we are experiencing.
That's right. This defund the police movement and different elements, it's nonsense, in my opinion.
You don't hear from the little kids anymore who want to grow up to be a fireman or a police officer anymore. I've kind of noticed that.
And the wages, you know, the wages haven't, they've not kept up with the real world either. You know, you can make a lot more money doing a job that's a lot less stressful and a lot less dangerous, you know, than being a police officer. And people are choosing to go the easy route.
Well, and you know we need to move on from this point, but the danger is not only in the inherent danger of the position, but the danger is also in a more and more adversarial environment, where there is not the expectation that you go into a situation as a peace officer to, to make the situation better. There's, there's a lot coming out of our law enforcement that is totally unfair in compounding the complexity of their job. And so I just appreciate the fact that this council and this community wants to make this a wonderful place to be a peace officer.
There's so many organizations that are trying to tear down the institutions. Chief Gregor and the Department of TPD, they continue to work diligently to keep our city safe, and doing an outstanding job there. Okay, next slide. Challenges, again, unfunded mandate, subsidies to landscape planning and airport, deferred maintenance, and ongoing needs. So these are, these are some of the things that we, the last year, I just gave you a couple items. Of course, when we start working on the budget, budget is every day, it literally is every day. But when we start working on the actual budget for the next fiscal budget for the following year, all of the department has put in their requests, right? In order, because everybody wants the best people, the best equipment, providing the best service to the city, right? Some of the things, though, that we removed from this budget, $350,000 for street rehabilitation, right? Took that out of Don's budget for pothole repair, those sorts of things, right? We removed a maintenance worker for landscaping needs. We don't want to start, we don't want our landscaping to start going astray. We do need more help, you know, every time somebody, we planted a million dollars worth of trees last year, remember that? We will not let those trees, you know, falter off, fall off the radar. But we need people and revenues to manage that. We also removed a senior maintenance worker for streets and sidewalks. So those are some of the things that we've removed out of this budget to balance the budget.
So we are going to have maintenance on the trees, just?
Yeah. We'll, we'll never let anything falter, but it's, it's more challenging, right? Like any business.
Just to clarify, so the maintenance worker for landscaping and so the senior maintenance worker, are these positions that existed that you cut, or positions somebody wanted to add that you said no?
At least in this budget.
And we have, you'll see the salary schedule in the budget, there are a lot of unfilled positions right now that council has approved previously. We'll never hire somebody that we can't pay for long-term, right? Fund long-term, right? So there's some positions that just go unfilled. These were additional positions that were requested.
I just want to clarify.
Okay, next slide. So that's general fund. It's a summary of our general fund. Any further questions? If not, we can move on to the other enterprise funds.
I just want to reemphasize that we can't go like this. You know, bridges in the United States are falling down because people didn't maintain them. We're not there, but we, we have to do something, like Christina was saying. Whatever it is, whether it's a one cent sales tax or whatever, we've got to review that, and we've got to start preparing people. No one wants to have an increase of anything, but I still like to go to bed at night and not hear gunshots, because the police department's doing what they're supposed to do. And, you know, my road hasn't fallen apart yet, that's good. But, but we have to have that level of maintenance so we can just go home.
All right, we'll move on to our enterprise funds. Let's see, capital projects, we'll go to the next slide. So this is, we'll start with water. So this is, we'll start with water. So, um, water sale revenue, so $2.7 million, which is a $164,000 million increase over last year's budget. Uh, and that's, you know, tap water that we're delivering to homes and businesses. Connection fee revenue, um, with a small increase, and that's when somebody builds a new home or commercial. So that's a connection fee, so you connect, it's your initiation, so that you buy into the water system. Entitlement fee, that's, that's a budget where, um, if you bring a water right to the city or, or money, uh, so that we can purchase water rights or purchase, you know, um, the ability to, to provide water. And then loan proceeds to purchase water rights, 1.8 million. That's not a loan that we've taken out. That's a loan that we project, we're planning on, um, taking out against the water fund should the need come about, right? It's solely dependent on development, but as a city, we're required to provide fresh water and wastewater services, right? And so you have to plan for that. So those business models are horrific, let's say, especially in the wastewater world when you spend millions of dollars to increase your wastewater plant and then over time you chip away at it and pay for that loan. In this case, we're planning on a 1.8 million dollar loan. Of course, we'd come to city council with a full report, asking for approval to do that, but if water rights make themselves available, and Don Marsh has done an amazing job, um, finding water rights for purchase, lease, or first, first right of refusals. So that's what that's all about, and we would, of course, bring that in more detail. But we have that in the budget so that we can continue to plan financially for that.
So the water sales revenue, the 6.3 increase from last year, just we have more homes online, more businesses using water?
Or, or some people use a little more water, so on and so forth, but we've had some growth, of course. Uh, but a 6.3% increase. Okay. All right, next slide. Well, look, this is a nice pie chart again. Um, this is the revenue, this is where the money comes from. Again, the, the red, the bond loans, 1.8 million, only if, uh, we believe that we need it, and we'll come to you for permission on that. Retail water, 2.7, water connections and little interest income, those sorts of things. 4.8 total. That's okay. Um, the 10-year, so this is snapshot again from '17, '18, all the way to '26, '27. And you can see, um, the re, the water sales. A lot of that has to do with weather, you know, does it get hot sooner or later, you know, drought mitigation, people use a little less water, those sorts of things. And then, you know, there's some, some building that happens. So, but it's, it's a fairly easy, um, trend in the upward manner, which would, you would expect. Next slide. So connection fees, you can see a big spike, right? In '18, '19, Walmart, and then in '19, '20, that was Town Place Suites, the hotel. So that's a connection fee, right? So that's all based upon an engineering calculation depending on projected water use. And there's a connection fee requirement for that.
So do we intentionally have, um, these estimates conservatively mapped out even though we are anticipating potentially having not maybe a Walmart-sized project, but development that would?
Right, so we work closely with Jay Development Services, and we, we try our best to project, you know, residential, retail. Uh, there's not a lot of retail on the horizon.
Okay, so...
People are, you know...
We're not looking for another year?
Not really.
Like, in the next, because this is five years with virtually no...
Correct. Yeah, I mean, it, it takes a couple of years to plan out a shopping center, if you will, and, and retail and rooftops, you know, they tend to follow each other. Um, but we can see that, you know, the rising cost of construction, uh, those sorts of things. So this is a conservative, but it doesn't have any real effect on the bottom line. Whenever you have a connection fee, you just collect some money.
It's a real cost.
We are, and Don and Jay already have the projected, you know, we need to drill a new water well, we need to put in the, the infrastructure for the, the water, the networking, those sorts of things. So these budgets are generally pretty healthy, but it doesn't hurt or harm our bottom line for operations.
Okay.
Okay, next slide. Uh, this is, uh, again, a pie chart showing our expenses, capital purchases, operating and personnel. Let's see what it takes to, um, to provide fresh water to all the students. Next slide. Um, operating fund, um, again, this is just, um, you know, personnel, operating, and capital project. Capital project, you see the spikes whenever we invest, uh, whether it's Cherry Lane water replacement that you just approved recently, or we're projecting out, uh, the Denison Road, um, uh, network to be, pipe to be replaced, main line. Next slide. Uh, water fund expenses, real quick, meter replacements, we do this every year. Wash rack, we want to put in a new wash rack. Front end loader, that's going to be shared, 30%, 33% of it between water and the other 67, um, between, um, wastewater. Director, another improvement, leased water rights, vehicle and backup lease, we have a couple of small leases, uh, potable water well, potentially drilling a new well, and water rights purchases, there again, 1.8. Next slide. Uh, this is the water operating fund. You can see that it's very healthy, um, you know, as we, as we move across the board and the available cash and different things. So it's, um, it's very healthy and can sustain, you know, it's off, which you would expect. Next slide.
Uh, the bottom.
You want to go back?
The very ending cash and AR. Uh, we're at 2.3.
Yeah, so we were...
2.3, then it's gonna level out at 1.4.
Right, because we're gonna spend money on, uh, the Cherry Lane water line replacement and then the Denison Road water line replacement. So we take, we build that cash reserve and then we spend it on infrastructure.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next slide. Uh, development fees, so this is, again, when, uh, development happens in the city of Tatchwee, if you need to connect into our water system, you would pay, you would pay into that. Okay, next slide. Water fund summary, so this is everything together. This is coupling everything together, uh, operations, uh, fees, different things. This gives you a total from 10,000 feet, our water fund summaries.
Go to previous slide. Ending ARs, oh, negative.
So, I mean, it's, because this is a development fee fund, so essentially, infrastructure's been...
It's, it's there.
Doing it, and then you have to collect the development fees.
So we're just...
And so we backfill a little bit.
Yeah.
It's in and out, in and out.
All right.
Okay. Next slide, I think. Yeah. So this is, oh, that was water, so we'll go on to sewer. Any further questions? Nope. Okay, sewer, um, we've got a small increase in our, in our final budget from last year. And, uh, fee revenue, of course, a little decrease in what we expected to receive from sewer connections, but again, that's an in and an out, doesn't have any, any bearing on our bottom line quite frankly. Next slide. Uh, this pie chart showing, you know, where the money is coming from, the revenue. Next slide. Uh, this is that 10-year trend again, trending up as you would expect with, you know, little ups, little downs from time to time. You can see that, um, you know, we're, we're in the 2.3 million range at this point. Next slide. Sewer connection fees, again, there you see the Walmart, right? '18, '19, big spike in connection fee, and then we come down to the 411, that was the Town Place Suites, right? Because hotels use a lot of, a lot of resources. And then it levels back down into the 200,000 range for the next couple of years, we expect. Expenses, operating, personnel, and capital purchases, some pie chart showing sewer fund expenses overall. Operating, of course, it takes a lot of power to run our waste water plant, electricity, chemicals, people.
Do we have enough land to put up solar panels, or is it just not?
Yeah, Don has looked at that many times. We've had consultants call us, we've studied it, it's never penciled out.
Yeah.
It may someday, but at this point, it's not, it's not there.
Can we buy part of a turbine that's on a hill that's just for municipal expenses?
I don't believe so. Those turbines, they all have agreements with Southern California Edison to sell power. Now, we could buy green power, but typically that power is a little more expensive than what we get off the grid.
Could we go into, uh, to eventually with other, several other cities and buy a turbine and have it just for us?
They're not reliable enough, so the wind stops blowing in the evening. We've researched that, remember, we had three, four turbines? We studied the heck out of that, and I recommended to council that we're subsidizing that. Now, there were lots of reasons, it was because they were old.
But we had to try.
You know, there were some, you know, you couldn't get spare parts, those sorts of things. But, uh, right now, we're operating at the most efficient way possible. Don has got it dialed in.
All right. Just ask.
Yeah. Good questions. Yeah. All right, next slide. Uh, expenses, again, there's the 67% for the front end loader, shared between water and wastewater. Uh, the clarifier, so it's a part of our operations, we need to, after several years, you need to overhaul, right? Change the oil, if you will. And so we're, we're, um, projecting $150,000 cost for that. Streets, we have payments, um, vehicle lease and airport land lease, as you, as you know, the wastewater company leases land at the airport for reclamation, part of our process for the wastewater operations. That 14,00632 is paid for by the wastewater company, it goes into the airport enterprise fund.
That was all calculated.
We hired an appraiser and it was all done, um, very precisely, actually. To the dollar. Okay, next slide. Uh, this is the operating fund. You can see, again, it's also very healthy. Uh, when you look at the very bottom, the ending cash, uh, we're a little over 2 million, and we're projecting that we'll be about 3.2 million, uh, in five years. Again, that's, that's, that's cash that we would use for, uh, operating, but also different upgrades like the clarifier, 150,000. You know, something goes wrong in the wastewater treatment plan, it can go wrong in a big way. And so you need lots of cash, uh, to be able to continue to provide that critical service.
Any major capital project for sewer in the near term?
Well, we had...
We had, you know, the, the big expansions several years ago that we saved up for and maybe we have a bond for that or we'll pay that off.
It's nearly, I think it's, it's just, we just paid it off, but we're so close.
Yeah.
Now we're getting ready to do it again, right? We'll see.
Right.
Well, we have a groundwater sustainability project, GSP, and we thought we had a partner with Tatchwee Cummings County Water District, but that turned out to be wrong. Uh, we continue to pursue that, though, because we believe in it.
Yeah.
Other communities are doing it, and, and we will continue to engineer and, and fight for the ability to do the right thing.
That we could have tertiary treatment and put it back into the...
Correct.
...into our groundwater.
It doesn't come cheap, but, um, water is a precious resource in all of the West.
Yeah.
Our basin is extremely healthy, uh, but let's keep it that way.
Yes.
There again, self-sustainability.
Yes.
Right? Let's, let's take care of our own, uh, depend on the state aqueduct or another government agency to do the right thing.
Because when times get tough, they will run or put it on our back.
Next slide. Uh, development fees, so this is, again, when a developer builds a home or retail, they pay into this fund, uh, for connections, right? In the county, a lot of areas, you, you, you design and build a septic tank, and then you have to maintain it. With the city of Tatchwee, you connect into our sewer, and then you basically leave the rest up to us. And environmentally, it's, it's, it's the right thing also. Okay, next slide. Sewer, this is summary, everything compiled. Uh, again, if you look at the, the, you know, the, the horizontal surplus deficit, you can see it's a surplus year over year, but it's adding to the very bottom, ending cash. So we're at 3.9, 3.9, I can see it from here.
Yes.
And then at 6.2, uh, after five years, projected five years from now. Very healthy fund. Okay, next slide. Uh, airport, we'll come to airport for a minute, was there any sewer wastewater questions, comments?
Yeah, on the sewer tree of the plant, how much more growth can that, our plant sustain?
Jay will have a really good answer for this, but it's a moving target. I believe Jay, if you want to make yourself...
Whoa, congratulations.
But because of efficiencies, you know, washing machines, dishwashers, they're using less water, which is less water that goes down...
Thousand homes.
Down the drain.
Thousand homes.
Thousand homes.
Okay.
The numbers, that's not precise, but, but for the sake of kind of answering, I think, the gist of your question, which is where are we at, you know, about 1,000 homes.
So our capacity currently would, would accommodate 1,000 new homes.
Is there a difference? Each component of a wastewater treatment plant, each sub-process has a capacity, and they're different. And so the plant is, it's the weakest chain, link in the chain concept, right? The single weakest component of the plant determines the plant's capacity. And so, um, right now, the weakest link is, is oxygen demand, our ability to, anyway, break down the components via bacterial growth. That's the simplest way I can put it. And so that's a moving, that's a moving target, that's kind of, anyway, there's, because you're dealing with a living organism, and so it's not, it's, you know, it's, it's not that simple. So, um, yeah. That's about the simplest way I can think to put it. It's a, but, you know, so the plant capacity is about 1.5 to 1.75 million gallons per day. We operate at about 800,000 gallons a day, so we're a little over half of the plant's current operating capacity, um, you know, but, but a new house, sorry, I'll stop. About 1,000 homes.
Thank you. The point is, with 1,000, uh, home, uh, future capacity, that we're able to fund, but we collect, uh, connection fees over the time period that we're getting to that 1,000, so that we can build another.
Yeah, we have money in the bank now in these funds that we've collected from previous years, and we made an expenditure, you guys talked about it, out of that fund and made some improvements, that actually added some plant capacity. Um, you know, so it's, if we were to do a project like GSP, we would do a major overhaul of the plant all at one time.
Right.
Um, but if we don't end up doing a project like GSP, we will probably make incremental steps in the coming years, because that's just a lot easier to afford and to manage than it is to do a giant, hey, let's double the size of the plant and just do it. Uh, you know, so, um, anyway, there's a lot of inherent complexity to how you, how you skin that cat, so to speak, so...
1,000 homes, that's just simply a baseline, because, you know, commercial, industrial, manufacturing, those sorts of things.
Is it, is it 1,200?
You know, bookstore, car wash, you know, all provide or require a different level of resource.
How many settling ponds do we have now? Any?
No, we don't use settling ponds anymore. No, that's...
Years ago, we had settling ponds, and in the right direction, on the right day, we used to know the sewer was working or not working, right?
Yeah.
And had a point where they were overflowing, we were dealing with raising the dikes so that they wouldn't overflow, so it wouldn't get into the creek.
Yeah.
We were not in that situation.
We're nowhere near that, wherein Tyler deserves, and his team deserve a lot of credit, as does Don, obviously, but I know Tyler's really the guy, you know, that, uh, that keeps a close eye on that. And we're, we've been in compliance for the entire time I've been your city engineer, uh, with no near misses either. We've been well into compliance that entire time, so...
It's a fascinating process.
Yeah, if you ever want to...
It really is.
It's a lot of fun, anyway.
Thank you. Thanks, Jay.
Yeah. Jay and I are geeking out on this. Okay, uh, we'll go to the next slide, please. So airport, uh, we'll talk about that for a minute. So again, um, 22, 23, a projected 7.5. That includes various funding sources, right, from the FAA, the state, um, general fund and, and other areas. Expenses, again, uh, this is a project that we've had in the books for quite some time. We're committed to following through for sure. Um, as I mentioned earlier, Ashley's working closely with the FAA, because there could be potentially, emphasize potentially, additional funds out there that could help close the gap for us.
So the state grant, is that the 5% from Caltrans Aeronautical?
Yes. Yes. And 2.84 is from Caltrans Aeronautical.
So, it's 90%, and then we might get a little bit more.
So, 90% from the FAA, and then the state is 5% of the 90%.
Yeah, and then we might give a little bit more.
Yeah.
Okay. It's kind of like the sales tax conversation.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Well, this one's a little easier, actually.
Quite a bit, actually. Okay, next slide. This is a nice pie chart of the operations revenue. So, Ms. Elliott passed about this earlier. There's a subsidy there, it's fuel sales. There's a little bit of money that's made on the fuel sales, but that's paying for, you know, we're leasing, not leasing. We have a loan on our fuel tanks or fuel farm, so the operations there, hangar fees, so we're receiving about 165,000, probably leases, so on and so forth. So, that's a revenue chart, 1.2 million projected for next year. Next slide. That's our expenses. So, we can see operations, fuel, we purchase fuel and personnel to operate that very large Okay, next slide. This is our operating fund. So, Mayor Smith, you'll remember, Councilmember Wiggins, I believe, several years ago, our auditor said, you've got to stop carrying that...
Subsidy.
Subsidy.
That we paid every year.
Thank you, you have to write it off every year.
Right.
Right, that's why we see the zeros there and the horizontal yellow. Every year, because there is no way to pay it off, this is very typical for general aviation airports, you run in the red, you'll never pay the general fund back, so you need to write it off every year. So, that's what we do. So, the subsidy varies, as we talked earlier in more detail. Next slide. Again, this talks about the big ramp, right? The taxiway relocation, the drainage improvement, you've probably seen the contractor out there on the far west end, digging big retention, detention basins, concrete structures, different things, really doing an amazing job, a good job for us, and that's going to free up more land. It's the first step to moving, relocating the taxiway, the large drainage improvement would be next. So, this is just one step in a multi-year process. Okay, next slide. The summary, so this is everything. Operations, overhead, grants, all those different things. We've gone over this quite a bit, so we'll go to the next slide, please. Refuge, this is our trash, right? Our Corey manages waste management. Waste management manages the state of California very well, quite frankly, lots of unfunded mandates. This is an enterprise fund that you want it to be kind of a net-net at the end of the year. Every year, you want it to be right at zero, as close as you can. You can see we have a little bit of surplus, you know, 6,000, 7,000 projected. I would rather be a little in the black than a little in the red, that's for sure, but it's a very healthy fund, and this is what it costs to pick up your waste and your recycling. And third can organics coming soon.
Is there any point you do your own for the city? Economy size, not there yet?
At this point, I don't think that's something we'd want to tackle. Waste management really understands the language at the state of California. They manage our affairs pretty well, quite frankly. There's some challenges locally, trash pickup, quite frankly, but the expertise when it comes to the state, state laws, different things, they manage that very well.
Okay.
All right, next slide. This is just a trend chart, you can see personnel and operating. Personnel is, you know, some of the allocations, Corey, Grace, others, that, you know, we do, in fact, even though we have a contract with Waste Management to manage it, the process, we still are involved, very heavily involved. Okay, next slide. Transit. So, this is Kern Regional and Dial-A-Ride, right? We've talked about that. We subsidized just a couple of months ago, council authorized, it was $96 subsidy, I believe, or $94, one of the two, per rider. Rider shift was down big time during COVID. We're looking at other options. Matt and his team and Corey are looking or meeting with the county. We're looking at potentially establishing a fixed route, maybe it's time to do that. So, we're exploring some opportunities. But again, this is heavily subsidized also, but it's required by law. Okay, next slide. You can see our, you can see the dip in 19, 20, of course, COVID, trending up. Okay, and expenses, next slide. Special revenues, so this is charges showing you SB1, we receive SB1 money, send a bid one for road maintenance, five-year, you know, what we expect the cost of the project and where that money is coming from, where it's going to be spent, gas tax, streets and roads, facilities impact, TDA, bike safety, $2,000 a year that we receive for bicycle ailments and things that the chief hands out, bike rodeos and things like that. Okay, next slide. Capital projects, this is some of the projects that Jay and Dawn have into queue. Jay's team manages really well. We can look at enhanced striping, we've got Beach Street to Currie Rehab, Brentwood Pedestrian Facilities, Valley Boulevard Park is the park that we received a grant through Caltrans, Clean California. Tree planting, we have a little money left over from that. Pinion Road Extension, 719,000, 720,000 for the Pinion Road. We're out to bid now, Jay, on that?
Just about.
Or just about?
On that one, is that this summer?
Yes.
That is so awesome.
Yeah.
Yes.
Can't wait. That was a C-MAC.
I'm going to ask them back in, so don't...
Yeah. The bands scare us, they really do.
But for those of us on that side of town with the school situation, it's just, it's going to be huge.
You're just right.
Yeah. It's just more of a long time.
And it's part of the master transportation plan that we put together many years ago, whether it's vehicle or bicycle or pedestrian plans that we put together years ago. We've wanted to do this for a long time. We identified a C-MAC, which is dust mitigation grant, and the county, East Green Resolution, who, where's the granting agency?
I'm sorry, I always question that, and you guys always talk about it for me, but we don't need to get the weeds.
Was it the state or county that was, not county necessarily, was it the C-MAC? Was it the C-MAC?
Yeah, C-MAC, it's federal money.
Federal.
It's federal air money.
Okay.
Yeah.
For dust mitigation.
But if, you know, you see those lines of backed up cars, it's just, it's going to, it's going to make that situation safer, better, people aren't going to be as big hurry.
Just going to predispose you to my nervousness over the bidding climate right now, so, anyway, everybody, you know, cross your fingers and toes.
It's such a good project, though. It's such a good project.
And again, there you go with, you know, being self-sufficient and reserves. If, God forbid, the price came in, you know, higher than we had engineering estimates, if we have reserves, we can kick our money that way, because it's a project that's important to the city and this community.
If you're ever bored, just hang out on your pinion about, you know, once high school gets out and watch all the pickup trucks fishtail and do this and everything, because they're all trying to beat each other. It's like a nightmare waiting to happen.
Well, pinion's been on the books as an arterial, just like Valley, through the Valley, correct?
For a long time.
Is there, what's the West connection beyond Currie? Does it go west?
All the way to Tucker.
All the way to Tucker.
Yeah, we're updating that master plan now, so we refresh it from time to time, kind of relook at traffic patterns, and so we're utilizing, you guys authorized us to use a LEAP grant, which I forget, don't ask me what the acronym stands for, I can't remember tonight, but to update our traffic modeling and our fee program. So, we're working with the county, actually, to look at the whole region as a whole and ask ourselves, again, those circulation, where do we next need roads, where do we next need traffic signals, etc.
Well, we'll remind the council of the traffic mitigation fee, in concert with the county of Kern, right? We're not going it alone, we have a regional fee, so as these projects, you know, materialize, they're of value to everyone in this area. So, okay, next, next slide. Land scape lighting, we've talked about this in great detail earlier, but this talks about Heritage Oaks, Clearview, Autumn Hills, I'm sorry, yeah, Autumn Hills, Orchard Glen, and so on and so forth. And this is a fun summary of each one individually. So, you can see that Heritage Oaks is a little upside down, Clearview a little more, Autumn Hills, right where it needs to be, different things, so that's where we are at this. Next slide. Drainage basins, so this is, you know, relative to landscape lighting, but retention, detention basins, they're helping, we've got a couple of them. So, we have Tatch Boulevard and Industrial Parkway. All right? Any questions? Okay, well, that's our presentation for you this evening. So, I'll read our recommendation to you this evening. So, we recommend three things, and I think we can take all three of them together, and that is approve and adopt a resolution for the city's final budget for fiscal year 22, 23, and preliminary budget for fiscal years 23, 24 through 26, 27 as presented, and adopt the resolution for the 22, 23 monthly and hourly salary schedule, and approve job descriptions for the Assistant Police Chief, Public Safety Support Specialist, Community and Records Supervisor, and Community Engagement Manager. Thank you.
So, Lou.
I'll second.
Any public comment? We've had two hours. All right, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Pogankore?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a 4-0 vote to adopt the two resolutions as presented.
Okay, thank you, and if you want to take a quick break, then six o'clock, we'll start our regular meeting.
Very good.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, everyone.